We're kind of going, okay. Okay, I declare this meeting open. Welcome to the November 21st, 2013 zoning board of appeals meeting. Nicole, you can call our first application.
Our first application, I'm just gonna have you vote on, is Sean Harris, 26th writ of request, MGL, chapter 48, section 6, special permit finding, and a floodplain special permit under section 470.9 of the citywide zoning by law to expand a nonconforming use with a 30-foot by 50-foot, one-story addition to an existing fiber tech auto body business and to amend prior zoning board finding dated June 2nd, 2004. The property is listed in 126th parashore. And the applicant's attorney submitted a letter to the board requesting to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
Look to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Our second application this evening is going to be South River Apartments LLC, requests that's a proposal for an affordable offsite housing unit for the Village at South River per the condition of the decision of May 27, 2008, not April 14, or considered.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
Mr. Sullivan, would you like to proceed?
Thank you. My name is Walter Sullivan, and this is Michael Salamondo, who is the developer and the owner of the property at Hummerock, the South River Partners. There are nine units built already, and, excuse me, seven built, seven, I take that back. There are nine buildings standing. I think seven of, five of which, excuse me, six of which have been sold.
Great deal.
And there's, the rest of them are, are under construction now. The financing, the building, the financing has been rendered. As you might remember, the condition of this special permit was that there would be one, one offsite affordable unit. And what we have put together is a package and an explanation indicating that we have found a place in the Green Bush area within walking distance of a variety store, a bakery, and the Green Bush, and the rail station. Plans, the sketch plans that we've given you, in addition to the zoning bylaw decision of 1961, and the plan that was submitted at that time, which was in essence, a plan showing a division of a single tract of land with two individual houses, upon one of, upon each of which, one building would remain. And what we're talking about is lot B. And we're talking about taking the small house out front, moving it back towards the rear of the lot, and then to add on to it so that it would be a three-bedroom, two-bath, with all of the various other str, other building, other rooms. And that's shown on the floor plan that we submitted. I think that this would be a logical place, and the building that's sitting there now is relatively small, but it's all been there for quite some time. The house, the house on lot A on that plan is ending up with one of the heirs of the folks who have owned that property since 1927. And that will still be there, and the one beside it is going to be, as I say, pushed back and added on to.
You know what, I probably should have started this meeting with disclosing, I am a, through an LLC, co-owner of the property directly across the street. Do, does your client have any concerns that I?
No, he knew that.
Okay.
And actually, I'm a owner of the property on the diagonally across on the same street, Union, Union Street.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Ed probably rode his bike down that road one time.
Of course, they don't own anything there.
Okay, all right, so then I guess we can proceed then. You know, you don't say, but I assume that when you move the house, it'll comply with all the side and rear setbacks? Okay. Okay, do you have anything else to add? Okay. And I reviewed the Department of Housing and Community Development regulations at 760 CMR, which talked about after a 40B project has been permitted, and an applicant wishes to make changes to the project, and it gives us, it first talks about whether we have to decide whether or not there are substantial changes to the, to the property, and then, or to the permit, rather. And then if, if we determine that it is, then we have to do something further for the, for the benefit of the audience and the board. I'll tell you what, what the housing community development considers substantial changes, which are not exhaustive, but these are some of the ones that, some of the things that they consider. Increase of more than 10% in the height of the buildings, increase of more than 10% in the number of the housing units, reduction in the size of the site, more than 10% in excess of any decrease in the number of housing units proposed, change in the building type, that is garden apartments, townhouses, high rises, or change from one form of housing tenure to the, to another. It doesn't, it certainly doesn't describe the circumstances which you presented, but it would seem to me just to relocate a house that, that you're talking about would not amount to a substantial change. Neil?
I just, I think it's good to apply the spirit of 40B, but this is not a 40B.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was a 40B. Well, never mind. I thought, I'm sorry, I thought Village at South River was a 40B.
Yeah, I know you would, it, I mean, it's, that's understandable.
It looks like it.
Excuse me, it kinda looked like a 40B project.
Not the physical building, but the, the.
Yeah, okay, well, I guess we don't have to worry about that, so, so, I guess, again, the question is, I don't know if that's the question, is that the standard still without a 40B, is this a substantial change?
Well, with respect to 40B, our application was really based upon a raise and reconstruct of a pre-existing structure, and the number of units that we were given, 14, was all based upon pretty much the structures that were upon the property at the time of the application. And I would say that this, the, the division of, the division plan itself with respect to this particular two lots is something that was, that could be done now under Mass General Laws, chapter 41, section 81L, which is two, two substantial structures on a several, on a piece of land that can be divided into two so long as one structure remains on the other. But this was done before that statute became effective, back in February of 1961. That was treated as a variance, so that's the possible land we're talking about.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the board?
Attorney Sullivan, I'm actually wondering, what are you asking us? Just our opinion on whether this is something that's worth going forward with, because it would appear to me that you're going to have to be before us again with a plan and proposal to relocate a build, to raise and reconstruct, or to significantly alter and increase the size more than 20% on a nonconforming lot, even though it was created by variance, it doesn't, it doesn't have 50-foot of frontage, it's, you know, all kinds of reasons, I would think we'd have to see this again.
I just would like to add something, because these lots were granted by variance. I think the question is, you know, are they pre-existing nonconforming lots? But I do think the structure itself, it, I just scaled it, it's about 20 feet from the street, so the structure has retained its pre-existing nonconforming status.
Right.
Even though the lot was granted by variance. So I think what they're looking for is a finding on a pre-existing nonconforming structure that can be reconstructed greater than 20%.
Are you, are you intending to move the, the structure, or are you intending to, also, they're not?
It wants to be relocated. We don't have any plan here to show where it's going to be loc, they're asking to relocate.
No, no, I just wanted to find that.
But what we need, yes, I'm comfortable that it, I'm comfortable that the, it has pre, pre-existing nonconforming status.
That was my only comment.
But, but because the lot doesn't conform, if no other reason, in order to get a building permit, they'd have to have approval of the ZBA for the work that they'd like to do there. In addition, it's increasing it more than 20%, I presume, and you're relocating it on lots, we'd like, it would seem that we'd need to see where it's located. So, I go back to my first question, are you simply asking us at this time if it makes sense to move forward, that, that this would be a satisfactory offsite project to satisfy the conditions of the permit for the Village at South River?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, can we do that by an amendment to the original permit?
I'm not sure we need an amendment. The, the original permit says that they will, they will find an offsite prior to the December 31st of this year, and they're proposing that this would be a reasonable solution for them.
So this would be the find.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You know, I just read the ad. Did you apply and notify about?
I was gonna mention that.
It was a meeting.
It was not noticed.
No, it was just, it was, he, they requested a meeting to discuss it, now they need to apply.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, so we're back on.
You obviously read it.
Well, that's, that's, it, at first blush, and I'm just asking if you have any other additional input on it, but you're asking me and the board to say this looks like, with the limited information we have before us, this looks like a reasonable project. It certainly suggests to me, because of its location in the B, in the B-zone, close to the train, near retail shops, restaurants, other things, it's a great spot for someone who is on limited income, who may benefit from an affordable housing unit, and all that sounds good to me, but I'm not sure I have a whole lot of information about the relocation, the increase in size. I think the, the floor plan you provided looks attractive, it looks like a livable three-bedroom unit with a, two baths, one referred to as a master bath, although it's not en suite, but it's, looks like, well, there's a door between the master bedroom and the, they're both off the hallway, but it, but it looks like a nice, usable, you know, functional, small home, and I think it meets the expectations of the board during the discussions about the Village of South River that an offsite affordable unit would be provided.
And it has a good-sized yard.
Yep, has a nice, has a nice yard.
I think with that, that building to be located, it's fairly flat, it's on town sewer, a lot of septic issues that they're gonna have to worry about, so in order to get the location, I don't think would be any problem for me to.
So I anticipated being, okay, I just don't have that information before us to, so I'd, I'd suggest moving forward would be reasonable.
I'd agree.
Do they need us to amend the prior decision?
Well, that was the question I just asked.
Doesn't it, doesn't it say a time for readiness, readiness for occupancy of the offsite unit, no later than December 20, 31st, 2013?
It's been amended, we've been amended a couple times on this.
But I thought that this was the most recent amendment, March 19th?
Oh, it is.
So aren't they not going to meet occupancy by the end of next month?
That, that's correct, and so.
So you are, you are looking for an amendment to the existing decision.
Well, we, we're treating this separately, so if the board indicates that it finds this to be reasonably suitable, and the next thing we would file would be indeed an application for a, the required application, plus we would also inquire further to extend the period of time for having the affordable unit in hand until probably around June.
I'm not sure we have another meeting scheduled before, oh, before December 31st, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Whenever it is, right.
What if we choose not to extend?
Oh, come on.
And I can't close on any other units, but I'm in the process of building.
I think it's, it's gonna be great, it's a little tiny house, and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the water's, it's a little height.
Neat little lot, yeah, it'll be good. Probably a lot nicer, too, being away from some of the noisy neighbors that exist across the street and down the road.
By the close proximity to your office, which would be a benefit.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not that tiny, there are some of us with similarly sized homes in Citrus.
It would be outside the four corners of the advertisement to, to extend the time limit or anything else at this time, I would think, correct?
I would think, I would assume we'd have to. So, we get to see you next month?
Thank you very much.
I would encourage you.
That would be very nice.
Sarah, Steve has a question.
Yes?
Yeah, I just wanna make the comments, Ed, you said something about 50 feet of frontage on that lot, isn't that a commercially zoned parcel of land?
It's business-owned land, yes.
I'm, I'm not sure whether the business, I mean, my property is, but I don't know if 14 is also business-owned.
I believe it is.
It is, so the setbacks are gonna change and stuff like that, I just wanted to be aware of that.
It's, it's business-owned.
Yeah, not commercial, it's business. It was actually an early business zone before the village zone was created, so.
Yeah, it was way back, like in the 80s, because everybody thought we did it for our property.
No, it was in the, it was, it was, it was a B-zone in 61 when the variance was granted, according to the file.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We'll see you next month.
Excellent, thank you, Walter.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, Thanksgiving.
I thought it was a 40B.
Go, we're underway.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Vito, hello. Every month lately, we've had one of those change of conditions to the 40B, I don't know why, it's affordable unit.
No, it's understandable, I mean, you're looking at an affordable unit.
Yeah.
You haven't had affordable units ever.
Yeah, I was all ready for that.
Yeah, I.
I wasn't ready.
It was good.
Sarah, I always think that one's a 40B, so it's not you, I'm constantly.
That was before your time, too, so.
Before my time, I think it's part of it, it's part of it, yeah. Hello, Mr. Mayor Vito?
Hi, John. How are you?
My name is Paul Mayor Vito from Ross Engineering Company. I'm representing the average gentleman after mayor, who is here this evening, seated to my left. You may be, you may recognize the site, we were back before that, in February 2011. Mr. Mayor purchased the dwelling on this lot, and he came to the boards for an increase in the gross floor area. Board approved a total of 3,847 square feet. The actual gross floor area that he constructed, or reconstructed, was 3,318, so about 500 square feet less than what was approved. What they did was to keep the footprint of the main house, and they added a one bay garage in this area here, and they added, and there's another one bay garage in this area here. Reason we're here this evening is that he's proposing to finish up the basement, which would add or increase the gross floor area. Reason we're here is because the only nonconformity of this lot is the front yard setback to the garage, which is, I'm sorry, the corner of the house is 24.3 feet. It's actually more the old house that was there before he performed some renovations. The, the increase is 1,350 square feet. That calculates to a gross floor increase of 40.7% over above what is there in the existing structure. And again, this is the finish off the basement. Away comparison in my letter, what I tried was to compare the, the increase in the gross floor area in the basement to what was approved back in February 2011, that just the comparison says that there would have been a 0.1, 0.3% increase.
And I'm sorry, could you, how much is the increase now would be?
The increase is 40.7.
Four, zero, point, seven.
Is that based on the original house, or based on the, based on the, on the existing?
That's, that's based on the existing, which is smaller than what you approved two years ago.
Right.
Again, if I were to base it on what you did approve, it's only a 20% increase, 21.3. In my letter, I also addressed the bio credit charity for the special permit, as to why we believe the board could approve without having any impact on the neighborhood. And again, all the work is gonna occur in the basement area, on the foundation.
Is this property on town sewer?
It's on town sewer, yes.
Okay, anything else? Neil, do you have any comments?
No, just that, I, I think pursuant to A10.2A alteration of single two-family nonconforming structures, the increases in square footage that are greater than 20% of the pre-existing, the initial structure, at any time in the history of that structure moving forward, require finding by the zoning board of appeals. So he's already got one finding, I was looking for another finding. That's it.
All right, does anybody have any?
Gross living area, this being below ground.
Right, that's under our definition.
Does it?
Right, that's under our definition as a considered gross living area.
I actually looked that up, yeah. I was, I really wasn't aware of that. So even if you use a basement, what's the difference with living area? Like a rec room type stuff?
Window size.
Finish, yeah.
Window size.
Yeah, I mean, areas of storage such as attics and garages is not considered...
I think HUD might disagree with our zoning guidelines. That's some of the confusion, I think.
Yeah.
So HUD requires their appraisals for debt ratios to not include basement below grade.
Right.
Anything below grade...
It has no bearing on our zoning.
No, just from my definition, it says including gross floor area. There's some of the areas, there's several floors of the building, including areas used for human occupancy in basements, attics, and penthouses. And I believe that, you know, the logical interpretation of that is that you can live there, you know, sleep down there, watch TV, you know.
But there's more than one person that slept in the basement.
You can't sleep down there. It's not a habitable space for egress.
Like most of the zoning bylaws, subject to interpretation.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
I was trying to save you the issue. That having been clarified, I have an observation, only inasmuch as if this were before us originally. The application when it was before us was sound, it was thoughtful. It reduced the nonconformity of the existing property, the existing home, along the setback area. The only reason, my recollection is that the applicant was before us was because rather than relocate the whole house and incur that expense, it was just the little corner that jutted out. And in the change, in the modification, it was actually brought back from the street about a foot or so.
Right, and where he actually brought it back is a little bit further than what was approved?
So I'm... The application before us originally was... I think that's, it's important that we come back to that's really the only reason that was happening here. Other than that, it would have been, it could have been done by matter of right, without any of this coming into play.
Just one little corner.
Well, and as you said, that's the only nonconformity. And it doesn't, it doesn't seem to me that your application proposes any... It would not intensify that or add any new nonconformities.
No.
So I think under Gale...
So are we starting this afresh, or are we modifying the previous?
Well, I think it's gotta be started fresh.
Start afresh.
It doesn't start afresh.
Okay.
Because it's a whole new situation.
It raises a concern, not on this application, but someone comes before us with a modification that increases by, well, in this case, fifty-six percent, and then comes before us after that modification takes place to increase twenty-six percent.
Right.
And then comes back again to increase twenty-three percent.
But this one's within the building, so...
I understand. But it does raise that concern that I think the board, if that were the case, if they were looking to do an addition, which increased the overall square footage with an addition onto the property, two-story, that type of thing, it would make me cause to be concerned, because I think, especially in a two-year time, it's important that we know what the applicant intends, same owner, et cetera. But here it's a case of, it's now constructed, everything's gone well. Can we finish the basement, please? That really is all you're asking. It's pretty straightforward.
Ironically, the other house had a finished basement, but they didn't pick up. They should have put it in the calculation. It was three quarters finished anyway, but it got destroyed during the renovation.
Okay.
So was the structure changed already?
The structure was changed as part of the previous finding.
So now it's in conformance?
Yeah, no, it still is not in conformance because that corner sticks out.
Just the corner.
So because of that corner, they have to come back for an addition of over twenty percent.
Okay. I'm just going through the Gale process again, so...
Yes.
Yeah. So we've identified that it doesn't... That that's the only respect in which it doesn't conform to the present bylaw. Then we have to determine whether it would intensify the existing nonconformities or result in additional ones, and the answer to that is no.
Correct.
And so the applicant's entitled to the permit.
Correct. I would say, so, any discussion on that? Okay, motion?
Audience, anyone want to talk?
Oh, audience, anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this?
I have one question. Is there any... Can you state your name and address? Sure, Elizabeth Seigel.
And your address?
Seventy-five Collier.
So you're around the corner somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Just curious whether this discussion today has any bearing on the other request to build a second structure on the property.
That's not before us at all, so no.
But does this increase in size of footprint have any bearing on what could increase...
Can you answer that question?
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Mr. Duggan says yes.
So if this size, if this...
I'm sorry, you have to identify yourself.
I'm John Luggatt. I live in seventy-five Collier Road as well.
What was your name?
John Luggatt.
Have you met your... No, I'm just kidding.
My point is, is that if this is approved, right, this increase in percentage, and then there's a secondary, an in-law apartment, or whatever they call them, that is a certain percentage of the living space of the original house.
That's exactly what Mr. Tippett was just talking about.
Right, and I just wanna clarify, I'm not quite sure what the outcome of the veto was.
It's just that, it's just that... Well, first of all, every application has to be taken independent of itself, you know? And so when this is, project's done, the square footage of the house is gonna be increased. And then if he wants to come back and ask for another increase to build something else, that has to be considered. And the starting point will be, what will be the total square footage when this is done? Paul?
Forty-six sixty-eight.
Right.
Okay, so if you...
Thirteen fifty plus thirty-three, eighteen, right.
So if he wants to increase it more than twenty percent of the forty-six sixty-eight, he'll be back in front of us with a new application for special permit?
He'll be back in front of us anyway.
I'm familiar with the situation.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The proposal that's going in front of the planning board is for a detached accessory dwelling.
Okay.
Right. Your detached, and I don't wanna discuss anything to do with the planning board. Simply say that they need a special permit through the planning board. Special permits are not a matter of right. They are discretionary to some degree. The board has to make, you know, findings similar to what this board is making. And the discussion really needs to be brought up before the planning board.
To clarify, what I was getting at is simply, and I'm sure the planning board takes into consideration the history of the property. So they will recognize that there has been an application to increase the size, and then whatever action is taken on this application, they'll recognize as well. But really, what this application is, is simply to finish the basement. And if it were another property in town, another home in town on a property that, or if this building was slightly relocated on the lot, it wouldn't even need to be before us, because it conforms in all other ways. That's my recollection, is that correct? It conforms in all other ways except the corner encroachment on the side yard setback. Correct?
Paul, is that you? Yes.
Yes, that's...
So this becomes fairly simple. If an applicant came before us after having had two hearings before us to increase size of living space and said, "I also want to add a physical addition to the structure," bumping it out the back and whatever, I'd have to take into consideration what had transpired before, and might be compelled to say, "That should have been before us before." And this is trying to nibble away at it instead of taking it all at one bite. If there's an application on this property or any other property for a detached accessory dwelling, that's another board's issue, and they would look at the same history of the property, and whether or not it impacts the neighborhood, et cetera, so... But that's, we're just looking at, can it, really, is, can we finish the basement? If it was, can we finish the basement and put Granny down there, that's another story. But we're not even talking about creating a new bedroom.
That's a whole different story. Building, it's a building code issue, too.
Right.
All right. Anybody else? Is there a motion?
Motion to grant, we're granting a new special permit, right?
That's what you'd like to do?
That's what I'd love to do. Motion to grant a new special permit to allow the finishing of the basement, resulting in an increase in square footage, as noted in the application.
Any...
Motion to grant a special permit to allow the finishing of the basement, resulting in an increase in square footage, as noted in the application. Sorry to make you type that before we've approved it.
I think we also have to find that it, don't we, that it doesn't conform...
Oh, right, right, right.
It doesn't conform to the setback requirement, but that the proposed alteration or addition does not further intensify any of the existing noncompliance.
Or result in new ones.
Right.
Okay.
Or substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
No, we don't do that.
Get Alex, that's the one that's pulled out because of Gale?
Yeah.
That's only, you get to say yes.
It's only, yeah.
I guess we'll discuss whether it's really dropped out when we find a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, I think.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
We've sort of been allaying that so far.
It does not, I'll give you the exact... Does not intensify the existing nonconformity or result in additional ones.
Second.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck with the basement.
Yeah, it's very, very, what you did is... It's very nice.
No one's accusing this one of being a tiny house, all right?
Yeah, no, no, no. It's a nice house.
Only my neighbors.
Gorgeous.
Yeah, yeah. Nicole, who writes this one? Where we at? You're it.
I didn't get credit for all those ones I double-dipped.
I'm next.
Right.
Okay.
These guys look familiar.
Frank, to write, I write your names down myself.
Were you guys appointed?
I feel like I've seen you before.
Every month for the last six months.
Aren't we all lucky?
I know.
Even if we weren't on the agenda, you'd still see us. What's the difference, right?
That's true.
Happy to have you. Does Nicole have a copy of this?
No.
Or is this...
This is just a cleaned-up copy, really, that Nicole just did.
Okay.
Our last application is continued from August seventeen, two thousand and thirteen. J. Stephen Bjorkland, trustee of fifty, Captain Daniel Litchfield Lane, requests a special permit to MGL, chapter forty-eight, section six, and floodplain special permit, which is a four seventy point nine of the city law or any other legal requirement necessary to allow the reconstruction of the previous announced and non-compliant and we all step back to climbing from three to four blocks, located at one forty-one Turner Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Hayes, could you...
Yes, my case, I represent the applicant, Stevie Orklin. And Sarah, I guess maybe with your permission, I could give, would you like me to give like a minute and a half recap of where we've been all summer and all that?
Well, you know, I wanna make sure I have it down right, because I was trying to do a little thing. Do you mind if I do it, then you tell me if I'm wrong?
Okay.
Okay, we... The application, Stephen Bjorkland, trustee of Atlantis Nature Study Realty Trust. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you wanna construct a single-family dwelling on the property located at one forty-one Turner Road.
Hopefully, we want to reconstrue.
Well, that is the question. The application, your public hearing was opened on June twelfth, correct?
Yes.
And you made some opening remarks, and then you requested a continuance because Mr. Duggan was not here, correct? And so we then met on July eighteenth, and you asked for another continuance on August fifteenth, another continuance. And these are because people were not here, either Mr. Duggan or particular board members. September nineteenth, and we didn't have any discussion on those nights, correct? September nineteenth, there was another request for continuance. October seventeenth, another request for continuance. And now we're back on November twenty-first.
Correct.
Okay, so the property is located one forty-one Turner Road, owned by Mr. Bjorkland, trustee of Atlantis Nature Realty, Atlantis Nature Study Realty Trust, who acquired it from Mr. Bjorkland individually by deed October third, nineteen ninety-six?
That's right.
Okay, and the property originally had a single-family dwelling located on it, which was built in nineteen... I mean, excuse me, eighteen ninety. And I think we can all agree that predated zoning. The land is presently vacant, has been since the original dwelling was destroyed in the blizzard of nineteen seventy-eight, correct?
Well, it was not destroyed in nineteen seventy-eight. It was damaged and moved off its foundation.
Okay. And then the property was raised, I mean, the structure was raised in nineteen eighty, correct?
Correct.
Is there any evidence that the prior owner ever sought to rebuild the structure?
There's no evidence, other than what he told Steve when Steve bought the property.
Okay. And now in nineteen ninety-one, Mr. Bjorkland purchased the property individually. Then he transferred it to himself as trustee, as we described, in nineteen ninety-six. So now you'd like approval to build this new structure in accord with the site plans that you have submitted, drawn by Ross Engineering, dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand and thirteen. Design plans drawn by Kundig Design dated March seventh, two thousand and thirteen, correct? Has there been any revision of those plans that we just discussed?
No.
Okay. So we've got a property in the A-three residential zoning district, right?
Yes.
All existing lot size, lot frontage, lot width are all nonconforming.
That's correct.
Okay. Instead of a hundred, instead of ten thousand square foot, you've got three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square foot of area. I see you nodding.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, instead of a hundred-foot lot width, you've got thirty-seven point sixty feet of width, frontage of thirty-seven point sixty instead of a hundred. And then the setbacks, it's vacant, so your intent is to rebuild everything within the setbacks, correct?
Correct.
It lies in the Situate Floodplain and Watershed Resource Protection District? Okay, and like I said, complying with all front, side, and rear setbacks. But obviously, the area width and frontage can't change. And as I understand it, your argument is that Massachusetts case law has evolved, and with the case of Gale versus zoning board of appeals of Gloucester, we're precluded applying any provision of the bylaws, particularly eight-ten point one or eight-thirty, and that you're entitled to a section of forty-A, section six, finding.
We also believe quite strongly that the board, this project meets the requirements of eight-ten point two A, and that no other relief is necessary... and that no other relief is necessary other than this board directing the building and expect it to issue a permit to, to build it.
Okay, well, I haven't, I don't recall reading what that says, but let me take a look.
Could I interrupt?
You sure can.
No one has applied to me for building permit, so.
No one has applied for one?
No.
Okay. So we can't force him to do something that nobody's, he hasn't?
That's my decision.
Right.
Obviously, if it's appealed, you get that.
Okay, 810.2A. Okay. And 810.2A, 810.2A says, "In the case of a building or structure which is nonconforming solely because of the insufficient lot, frontage, or area, or both, the proposed repair..." Well, first of all, can we stop for a second? The very first line, we don't have a building or structure.
But if you look at the first line of 810.2, Sarah, it says, "The building commissioner may permit the repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change." So he has the right to a reconstruction.
But I'm not sure, I guess we're, I can't get past the fact that we don't have a structure. We haven't had a structure on this property since 1980.
That's true. Let me read you the, the definition of reconstruction. Reconstruct is to construct again, to rebuild either in fact or idea, or to remodel, to form again or renew, as in the imagination, or to restore again an entity, as an entity, the thing which was lost or destroyed. Reconstruction is act of constructing again. It presupposes the nonexistence of the thing to be reconstructed as an entity, that the thing before existing has lost its identity. And I think it's quite clear, frankly, I mean, in, in case law, that reconstruction presupposes the nonexistence, can, can presuppose the nonexistence of the structure that was once there.
Okay, but isn't, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure, Mike, that we're ever going to come to an agreement at this board. Because I, I look at the case that you cited in your initial presentation, which was Dial Away Company, Inc. versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Auburn, which is this case. This is your case. This is a structure, an undersized lot, and the question is whether under the Auburn zoning bylaw, an undersized lot retains its protected character as a buildable lot 23 years after nonconforming dwelling on the lot was raised. You, you have to just simply say, change the word Situate for Auburn and 33 years, from 23 years.
But I think if you read the entire case, what it does say, however, is that the court is not convinced that there could be any circumstance where the mere nonuse of that structure or nonexistence of that structure would preclude its reconstruction. But what it did say, however, is that the court felt in Dial Away that as a matter of law, 23 years of doing absolutely nothing was enough. That's all, that's all Dial Away said. It says it does not presuppose there are circumstances where the non, that situation would preclude the reconstruction. It's just 23 years, they said, of doing absolutely nothing is too much. That's all it says.
This is, actually, that's not exactly what it says, and I'll quote it. Nevertheless, we consider this a case where the lapse of time following the demolition, 23 years, is so significant that abandonment exists as a matter of law.
That's what it said.
Well, it doesn't say that it does, that nobody was doing anything, but it, but it also cites, you know, a five period, five year period of nonuse, a 10 year period of nonuse. I, I'm not so sure that if, if we were just solely talking about, I'm not going to make a, you know, statement, if we were solely talking about Mr. Bjorkland and what his activities were, you know, since he bought the property originally in 1991. But the problem is, is that his predecessor entitled didn't do anything himself for over 11 years. And that's why I asked you.
If he did, would it be different?
You know, we don't have, no, it wouldn't be any different, but, but I said that it's, it's, it was, you know, you've had this litigated in front of the land court and the superior court multiple times. And they have ruled that as a matter of law, it's gone. You, you've, you've lost your opportunity. The bylaw in 1978 says that, that there was a two-year time period by which the property needed to have been rebuilt when it was destroyed by accidental cause. And that two years, you know, I don't know who the, the gentleman name was who owned it when you, when you bought it.
Edward Locke.
Locke? Mr. Locke created the abandonment, okay? We don't even have to go what, what you did or what you didn't do, whether or not it, you know. As, as I see it, there is nothing in the case law, there's nothing in Gail that changes, you know, what has already been decided in this case, in this exact same issue. I think you're stuck by, you've litigated it, you know, it's race judicata, it's the same issue, you're wanting another bite at it. The law has not changed to, you know, I know you're smiling and I know you're hopeful and, you know, go for it, buddy.
I have to disagree strongly for a couple of reasons. Number one, the law has changed in this state. Number two, our bylaw has changed in this town. This is a different application with a different set of circumstances that requires, in our opinion, a, a result.
Which bylaw has changed?
Situate bylaw, 800.
810.2A was added in 2010, after my denial, which says that a single family dwelling may be reconstructed.
The abandonment provision hasn't changed though, has it?
Provision has not changed.
And so isn't, isn't that the question here as to whether this property's been abandoned both under Chapter 40A, Section 6, and the Situate bylaw?
That is the question.
And, and, I mean, my own view is, is reading what's happened before is that the courts have already decided that issue, so I think it is race judicata. But even if it isn't, what's different? What facts are different on the abandonment issue now, other than this, the fact that we have a new bylaw provision that you can, you can apply under? The, what's different that would change any one of the board members here's view on whether the property was abandoned or not?
Prior to 2010, we had the two-year abandonment clause. Everybody can agree to that?
We can, I'm going to go so far, and, and I have a copy for you and pass that to Nicole. This is the building code, the zoning, can you hand this to this guy? The, the building code in 1978.
The zoning, the zoning.
The zoning law, the zoning code in 1978, and, and it says, it's a two-year, "Any lawful building or structure existing at the effective date of this bylaw, subject to limitations established by Section 6, Chapter 40A, may be continued, although not in conformity with the provision thereof, unless or until abandoned or not used for a period of two years or more." So when this property was damaged, there was a two-year, and, and, and the case law says that you don't get to take that snapshot and move it forward. It's, it, it, it would be, it's just not the way the law works. You have to apply the law that was, was in effect at the time the event occurred. And in 1978, Mr. Locke had two years to do something, and he didn't do it.
So do we then change the bylaw in the early 90s for the people that were storm damaged from 1991 to give them more time to reconstruct?
If that's what the bylaw did, then that's what the bylaw did.
It absolutely did.
You cannot go back and then say, oh, all these other properties that were destroyed before now were, you know, it could have, but it didn't. The bylaw didn't say, "Any property that's ever been destroyed in a storm in Situate, we're going to give you a whole new opportunity to build." You know, the, 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 the law that told, you know, gave the dimensional requirements in Situate was in place in 1957.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
It hasn't changed.
Okay.
Okay?
So has the two-year abandonment changed at all since 1987?
It has changed.
The two-year abandonment has changed?
Since, you said that it changed in the 90s, right?
What I said was if you had a storm damaged property, after the storm in 91, when there were 40 or 50 people that weren't going to meet that two-year requirement, the town changed the bylaw in Section 830, I believe it was, to say that they could have more time to reconstruct a home if it was storm damaged.
But we're not talking, yours is lost, yours is lost in 19, this, the right to rebuild, I believe, and I think the courts believed, the superior court believed, and the land court believed, that your right to rebuild was long extinguished before you ever bought this property.
Because of Section 810 of the bylaw?
It's done. I, I mean, I think you're gonna, you're gonna litigate it again, and, you know, what'll happen will happen, but.
But because of Section 810 of the bylaw?
That's the bylaw, you had two, there were two years.
Okay. Have you changed anything in Section 810 of the bylaw?
Why does it matter?
That would allow anybody any longer than two years to not use a single family dwelling?
This is not the issue. The issue is, is what, what applies to this property? What is the standard that we apply to this property? In this property, it was long, your, your right to rebuild, the owner of this property, the right to rebuild, I believe, and, and I don't know what the other, my fellow board members believe, but the right to rebuild, I say, is, is, you know, has long been gone, you've had, you have litigated this. And again, there is nothing been, you've had your opportunity in court and you've been denied, and, you know, I understand you think that Gail gives you a new chance at it, but Gail talks about existing structures, it just does not apply in this case.
So I just want to make sure that in your opinion, the two-year timeframe, if you don't use a dwelling for two years, it's abandoned and they've lost the right to use that dwelling. It's gone.
You know, you're asking me to make a statement of law, and I'm talking to you specifically about your, and that's all I'm going to say. It's, it's with relative to your property, your opportunity to, to rebuild is gone.
Okay.
I just want to.
Mike can continue, I guess.
I, I'm not going to get into the discussion because, for various reasons. I just want to point out 830, which was a much more liberal application for folks. The last line of Section 830 basically says, provided, said, "Building or structure existed or had the right to exist at the time of application," and according to Section 800 of the bylaw. And I further want to state that any determination I made that a building or structure had the right to exist, whether there or not, has been settled. Fully vetted, settled.
Absolutely.
Opportunities for folks to appeal, and every call I've ever made has been consistent and, in my opinion, legitimate, and, but, but but I think the basic thing here is, these matters have been settled. I don't believe they're applicable here for the very reasons you've stated.
So, Mike, do you have anything else to add?
Well, I do, yes. I mean, again, this thing has been continued all, all summer for a couple of times because Neil wasn't able to be here, and, and we felt it was important to have Neil here. We, we respect Neil's opinion and his ability to, to guide the board and, and to guide us, and whether we agree with him or not, we want him to be here. And so, and we, and we respect his opinion, and we respect the board's opinion. We think the board has acted properly in a number of cases in this town recently, and.
Thank you.
Has, when.
I feel a but coming.
There's a but.
Was there, is there a certain number of cases we've, as opposed to that we've been properly, as opposed to improperly?
Has not applied the two-year timeframe. And we think that that's correct because, again, we feel, and we feel very strongly, that the Section 830 involves structures other than a single or two-family home. We think Section 810.1, it does not apply to single or two-family homes. And we think the board has, on numerous occasions, has acted accordingly. The other reason we had continued this is, is that we felt, and the board felt, that it would be good to get town council's opinion, which you have. And town council says that they feel that Section 810.1, the two-year timeframe, applies to the entirety of Section 800, including 830. And if you agree with, if you agree with that, I mean, that, I think, Sarah, I'm not going to try and put words in your mouth, I think you agree with that. We don't agree. We think they're wrong, and we think this board has acted over the years, and this town has acted over the years, that that's not what they believe our bylaw says. I mean, and there are, there are a number of houses that are standing that have not followed the two-year abandonment or nonuse. There are a number of pieces of property currently in Situate that will be coming up for reconstruction or, or work. I can go, I have some photos I'd like to share with you and just go through a brief list. We also have a list of bank-owned property in this town. Bank-owned property is going to be a huge problem going forward. Bank-owned properties that have been sitting for years, they call them zombie homes, unused, sitting there. And we think that this discussion is incredibly important for this town going forward, out of, out of the recession of 2008. And we think it's incredibly important for the, for the whole Commonwealth. But my goal tonight is, that's, those are discussions for another day. My goal is, is this property that we're in discussion with. So, and then we'll pass these around, but there's houses currently in town right now. 161 rear Glades Road, hasn't been touched for over 10 years. 109 Glades Road, storm damaged, been vacant five years. 12 Pondview Extension, that's the old drug house that the police shut down four or five years ago, been vacant. 24 Pleasant Street, it's been vacant for more than three years. Town auction property, Town Auction Property, 23 Pleasant Street, vacant more than two years. Captain Pierce Road Extension, vacant since 1995. 579 Country Way, vacant more than three years. 529 and 531 Country Way, two homes on one lot, unused for more than three years. 24 Summer Street, vacant six years. 145 River State, it's been stuck in an estate for more than three years, sitting there, vacant. Polly Road, 38, fire damage, vacant for six years. 15 and 17 South 7th Avenue, both sustained fire damage, haven't been used in more than two years. 160 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, burned and vacant more than two years. 1 Glades Road, received a building permit 11 days before the four-year time limit expired. There were no permits applied for before the three-year period anniversary of the damage. It had no right to extend the four-year time limit, but it's a beautiful home with an occupancy permit.
Years later.
9 Mitchell Lab, the fire station, hasn't been used in 20 years. 25 Ocean Drive, stuck and probate again, unused since the mid 90s.
But yet received a permit to do work on that, and now they're using the property. They've rebuilt it.
Could I, could I just add something here? When you talk about a building permit that was issued 15, 16 years ago, that was not appealed, that matter's settled, it's irrelevant. And I'm just going to make one more statement. The past decisions of zoning boards are not binding on current zoning boards. In decisions of buildings expected. In decisions of buildings inspectors certainly are not binding on zoning boards of appeal, and this is really what we're, I think, discussing here. And I think we could go on all night and-
Right, right, and I'm just letting-
That's why I initially said, this, these matters have all been settled.
Right.
They're, they're way past, you know, appeal, they're irrelevant, um, and I stand by my, I think, my, my actions have been consistent. Uh, I have looked closely at the law, I understand the law, and my interpretations are made in my best judgment, uh, in, consistent with the law. But these are all, these are all settled issues.
Right.
And I agree with Neil that he's, he's pretty consistent. This, this particular property right here is located at forty-seven Ocean Drive. This was stuck in the same probate as the last one that Mike showed you, and I have a letter here from Neil that says, "I'm writing in regards to your dilapidated, unoccupied cottage at forty, forty-seven Ocean Drive, Homrock, Mass. The building has been in disrepair and unoccupied during the almost ten years I've been the building commissioner for the town of Situate." I'll, I'll improvise here and get to the bottom of it. It basically says, "You're further notified, this building is a non-conforming structure pursuant to the town of Situate bylaw, and any lawful use of the structure or land, it's non-conforming, may not continue, it's abandoned for, for more than two years." Okay? So Neil wrote the letter. He did the right, he did the right thing.
I do want to respond to this, because, um, that, that letter was written, that house sat there, um, it was open to the weather. The people did not respond, you know, I was, uh, hoping to get a response, and we ultimately did get a response. It was years and years and years and years, and, uh, I would point out, Mr. Bajrakal agreed, there is no case law on, uh, the, as, as far as I know, on whether or not a structure, single-family dwelling, existing on a non-conforming lot. In my, my theory is that, in my interpretation, it's subject to review certainly by the zoning board and by the courts, is that the very existence of that structure on the non-conforming lot is a use of that non-conforming lot, and therefore, the use continues, even though you haven't, you're not living in it. And I would, that was a very strong letter, trying to, you know, address a, you know, what could have been a public safety hazard, and, you know, it wasn't particularly effective, because we still didn't hear from them, yes, they're elderly company.
It's very effective, because there's a new dwelling there now, which is a great thing. All the houses-
But I would argue that, I would simply argue that, that, that non-conforming lot is, in fact, in use in a residential district, and the residential use isn't allowed use.
So, so any, any non-conforming building that happens to be residential, that sits on a lot that's not used, retains its non-conforming status? That's the comment you're making?
No, I finished my statement.
Okay. Town council says that's not the case, okay? So as each of those comes forward for building permits, town council says you lose it after two years. That's what you're telling me. I lose it after two years. There's nothing in the bylaw that talks about whether the structure exists or doesn't exist. What we're talking about is whether we have a right to reconstruct or not. This particular building that we're talking about, again, I can't appeal all these permits. They'll say I have no standing. That's great. I have no standing on any of these. I'm not here to prove if I have standing or not standing. What I'm here for is to get the same treatment that the town of Situate has given to all the people that have tried to rebuild. I can't find one single property in the history of the town of Situate that's been denied under section eight-hundred of the zoning bylaw the right to reconstruct after non-use for two years or more, except for one forty-one Turner Road, okay? I can find a lot of them, and you've seen some of them in here, that have gone way beyond that two-year timeframe for single-family dwellings. Sarah, you said it can't happen after two years, and Neil wrote this letter. I don't want to put Neil on the spot, but I wanted him to, to listen to what I was saying.
I'm happy to be on the spot, Steve, I can, I can answer all your questions.
Okay. This particular home was absolutely not used for over twenty years. It was a non-conforming building in the town of Situate on a non-conforming lot, and they then came in two thousand and eleven to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit to reconstruct the dwelling, twenty years after the dwelling wasn't used. It says, "The board specifically finds that the existing single-family dwelling is a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and is entitled to protection afforded in forty-eight, section six." After twenty years of non-use, it retained its ability under forty-eight, section six. This was signed by Peter Moran and Sarah Trezies. So somehow, you believe twenty years after a building has not been used, they have a right to go back and rebuild that home, but I can't. I don't understand the difference. All these homes are that way, and you say it's because the dwelling doesn't exist, okay? Let's throw everyone out that we've done here, and let's say, okay, it's because the dwelling doesn't exist. What's the history of the zoning board of appeals for dwellings that don't exist, that have applied to the zoning board of appeals for permits to reconstruct? Mr. Hayes has two of them. One of them is located at one sixty-seven Jericho Road. It's Mr. McLaughlin's. There's a foundation that's been sitting there for years. It's the Tracy property. It was destroyed in the storm of seventy-eight. I owned the building next door. I appealed it. They said I had no standing, because I sold my building. I don't want to take that house away from them. Let them rebuild the house. In the town of Situate, we let people rebuild their houses. We just don't let me, okay? The Judge's property at Beaver Dam Road, it blew up in two, in nineteen eighty-two. Twenty years later, the zoning board of appeals said, "It's a reconstruction." How could they do that? The building wasn't there for twenty years. Well, we can do it there. We just want Steve Bjorkland to not be able to rebuild, because his house was taken down in nineteen eighty. Not one other person has been denied the right under section eight-hundred. Very clearly in section eight-hundred, it says that you can direct the building inspector to issue a building permit for a piece of property to reconstruct it if it's not more than twenty percent larger than what existed before. In the town of Situate, the history is, twenty years is still a reconstruction, okay? Mike was right. Dialaway, they didn't do anything in Dialaway. They just let it sit for twenty-three years. We have a history on this property, and Mr. Locke did go forward in nineteen eighty-five and attempt to rebuild on it, and he was denied the right to rebuild.
That's right.
Okay? Nineteen eighty-five, so they went from eighty to eighty-five.
Oh, so it's Mr. Locke and you then. Let's get it straight.
No, it was Mr. Locke. I wasn't involved.
No, no, no. You said you were the only person who's ever been denied-
The property at one forty-one Turner Road.
You know, you, you, you can say all you want. It's gonna, I, I'm not gonna respond to any of them.
I know.
You know what? You're gonna have your day in court.
Well, actually, what I'd like to do-
You know, it's up to me. I mean, I'm not the only one voting here, so.
And we actually only need two votes to direct the building inspector to issue a permit for the reconstruction of the property.
Can I just reiterate?
Sure.
What I said. Um, I, I think in all these cases, um, with the possible exception of Beaver Dam Road, and I'd have to review the file exactly what happened there, because I think there was something in a prior decision that extended the right to build until, uh, councilor came along or something to that effect, but I'm, I'm not-
No, uh, what happened in that one was that the, the owner had, uh, extended permits yearly for a number of years, and then was told he didn't have to, but what, what the board said, however, was that regardless of why he stopped applying for extensions, the fact of the matter was, he did not extend, and the board made a specific finding that-
That doesn't set any precedent for this board, nor, nor is it really relevant to, uh-
I, I think it is relevant, and, and again, we won't get into this discussion, but, again, the point is-
I think the board should be comforted in this, that if you adopt the view that a, and years ago, probably fifteen years ago, we had a similar discussion with, um, a former chairman of the board, uh, somebody came in front of him, and we made the point, if somebody goes on sabbatical as a cottage on a non-conforming lot in Situate, doesn't use it for two years and six months, does the town swoop in and take it away? No. We have to create a rational, reasonable interpretation of what our bylaw means by non-use. When we say non-use, in my opinion, we're talking about a gas station in a residential area that's not used. When we talk about a residential structure on a non-conforming lot, that use is storage of the structure, the single-family dwelling, if you will. It's a use of right, a residential use of right, that's not a non-conforming use. The, what is non-conforming? The lot is non-conforming. Perhaps the house is non-conforming, but, but in total, that, that use is not, first of all, it hasn't been abandoned in, in the non-use, and, you know, town council, I'm not sure where he addresses non-use of residential property, but, but that, that's fine. It's, it's, this is simply a discussion. But there's plenty of cottages in estates, you know, we just, that is not the intent of the bylaw. That's not how I interpret it. And I think the board, you know, should have a good discussion about it at some point, because, um, but I would not concede that there's any, um, relationship between a vacant lot that's been declared non-buildable by at least three, well, two courts, um, is now somehow a rather comparable to, uh, you know, all these, all these houses that are, lots that have structures on them.
I mean, I think, I think the point is, is taken, is that you're, you're, you're right to have, I mean, it's still a residential lot. It's just not a legal residential lot, because it's thirty-seven percent of what is, of what is required. And you can't just kind of look back, and, and there are limits to when you can build on it, you know? So however you look at it, you know, we have, I mean, you know, we don't have to grant you a special permit, even if, even if we decided none of this mattered, because it is an extremely small lot, okay? And, um, you, you know, you, you've missed on the lot area, you miss on the lot width, you miss on the frontage.
Each and every one of the properties that we've shown you here tonight misses.
You know what?
Each and every one of the properties that's here, that you've seen tonight, missed the two-year timeframe, okay? The bylaw specifically refers to buildings, not vacant lots. It says buildings that are not used. Each of those buildings have not been used for two years or more. Each of those buildings, okay, is non-conforming. I'm just curious if the town's gonna continue to issue permits for people to rebuild in violation. If you agree with town council's letter, you have to say those buildings are in violation.
I guess you can hang around and see. We'll decide, because you know what? They're gonna be decided on a case-by-case basis, just as those were. Not a single one of those were appealed. That doesn't mean they're right, and I'm not saying they were wrong. I'm just saying, that ship has sailed. This is the, this is the application in front of us, your application. That's the only one, and that's really all the discussion needs to be. You can save the rest of your argument if we've been arbitrary and capricious and try to convince a Superior Court judge that you haven't been able to convince so far, or a land court judge that you haven't been able to convince so far, that you're entitled to it. And you know what? If they find out you're entitled to it, you come back. If I'm still on the board, I'm happy to hand it to you.
I, that's just one question, and hopefully in closing. How, and this is a rhetorical question. How can you abandon a residential use in a residential neighborhood, all right? You can abandon a, 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 a structure, which has happened here, but you can't abandon a residential use. And that's, that's the way-
You just have a right. You, you don't have a right to build there, because you don't meet the bylaw. That's what it says. You have to meet the bylaw, and you don't meet the bylaw anymore. Never did, you know? You existed, but just, I mean, even in, in Dialaway, it says, just because something was built in nineteen forty-four and, and nothing, you know, you don't keep, to keep going back and saying, well, one time there was a house on there, and, you know, it was before zoning, so we get to bootstrap on that. You just don't, you don't, it just doesn't the way, it's not the way the case law works.
It's really not what, it's really not what Dialaway says, but-
Yeah, that's the way the decisions in the town of Situate have worked. So Beaver Dam Road didn't exist when I was denied before, but I think if the courts see that the town has issued permits twenty years later, that's fine. I, I don't, I don't have a problem going to court on it. I mean, that, that's not really an issue. I mean, I needed to get all of these in the record, so that you now are aware of each and every one of those properties.
I didn't need to get any of them in the, the record. You just want to shove them in our face, because you get, you get a, a whole new ballgame when you go to the Superior Court. You can bring whatever up you want up there. You just wanted to make sure we all saw it, so we, you know?
I respectfully disagree and object to say we're trying to shove things in your face.
Well, yeah, I felt pretty shocked.
What we are doing is giving the board, in our opinion, the opportunity to make the right decision under our changed bylaw, under the changed circumstances of case law. Uh, we're not, we're just asking for a fair shot, uh, and we feel strongly that, uh, other properties have been given, uh, fair shots. This property has not been given a fair shot. Uh, the law, and, uh, we think logically, uh, that two out of three of this board can vote to instruct the building inspector to issue a permit under eight-ten point two A.
Well, I got a question that, um, that's not even what you asked for.
Were you asked for, uh, or what?
Or any other relief?
Any other relief, and that's what we asked for since the first night, and that's what we're asking for tonight.
Well, you know, um, I, 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 I'm not sure that I agree that that's what the bylaw says. Um, you know, there hasn't been a denial of, you know, there has not, you have not submitted a permit application. There hasn't been a denial of the permit. So I don't know how we, why we have a right to tell Mr. Duggan that he has to issue a permit, a building permit. I, I don't, I don't, I don't see it in the bylaw that we have, we have any, have any right at this point to do that.
I would agree, and, and with all due respect, I, I think the, the way the law is set up is that the building inspector, and, you know, receives an application. I interpret the bylaw. If someone disagrees with my interpretation, they appeal to the zoning board of appeals, which point the zoning board of appeals can overturn the building inspector. But the first call is the building inspector.
That's which we go back to, you know? Non-conforming, single-family dwelling. You don't have one. It doesn't exist.
Neither did half the ones in town that got wiped out by the storm that got permits to rebuild, but you can say, however you want to say it, half of them floated down the street.
Well, you said that this, this wasn't wiped out by the storm. It was voluntarily demolished.
It was actually taken down in agreement with the town that the guy could rebuild when he came back, but I don't want to get into what happened in nineteen eighty.
I think it was required to be razed, right?
Well, I thought we are getting back to it.
So it wasn't completely voluntary. Voluntary might not be the right way to talk about the raisin.
It was handled through court. You're, you're absolutely correct.
Right, Emma, it, I just want to clarify my understanding. They had to tear it down, right?
I only know what's in the record, you know? It's in the record that, that there was damaged, and it was, it was, um, uh-
Town took Mr. Locke to court to force him to remove it, and, uh, rather than, there was an agreement for judgment uh, pursuant to the town suing Mr. Locke, that he would take it down. And he was-
He left it there, been for a number of years.
Correct.
Two years.
Had.
All right, I'm sorry. You know, when we ask for comments from the, which we're getting close to. Do you have anything else, Mr., you know, Mr. Hayes, Attorney Hayes?
I'm, I think we're done.
Okay, well, I have one last comment.
Yes.
And I just want to say, at the last meeting when Mr. Tibbs, um, was speaking about Mr. Dowell's property on, um, Country Way, he made a really good comment, and the comment that he made was, "This board has to act on the evidence that's presented to them, and not one person has come forward and said that anybody else has been denied under section eight-hundred. Everything that we've shown you is people getting extended beyond the timeframes that show in the town zoning bylaw. Not one property, other than one forty-one Turner Road, has been denied under that section."
As far as I can say, this has no evidence that's relevant in this, in this section.
I just had to ask off of the record.
Yes.
After nineteen seventy-eight, um, the, when two years passed, I think the zoning board at the time was kind of routinely giving people variances, uh, to reconstruct, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, you know the history.
I don't, I don't think there were variances. I think they just extended them and said, "Go ahead."
Well, they weren't variances. They were, they were permission, uh, to reconstruct after that two-year period. Um, until there was an appeal, and I can't think of the name of the case, and the judge basically ordered the town, you know, to, not to issue any more permits on lots that had not been constructed, uh, after nineteen seventy-eight blizzard. And, um, since that time, all those lots, none of those lots have been reconstructed on. Um, and, and this, this is, this is a case, frankly, where, you know, the house was, was destroyed. Nothing happened for eleven years. Mr. Bajrakal bought it. Would you care to tell them what you paid for it? I won't tell them.
It's in the record.
Doesn't make a difference. Doesn't make a difference.
Doesn't make a difference.
Doesn't make a difference if it was given to me by my father, or I paid a million dollars.
Exactly right. So I think Mr. Bajrakal understood the value of this lot when he bought it, and, uh, the, the situation, so.
Well, I mean, just so that you, the, the record's clear on, on that circumstance, Neil, you have to be fair and, and agree, or at least acknowledge, uh, has, has been acknowledged for, uh, twenty-three years, is that when, uh, Mr. Locke sold the property, he said he would sell it to Steve on, on one condition, that he would never give up trying to build on this lot, because the town had treated him unfairly. And that's as much, that's as relevant as-
Yeah, just for the record, I wouldn't do it.
As, as relevant to, uh, the record as you're, you're trying to- As, as relevant to the record as you're, you're trying to say that the price of the lot matters.
Yeah.
There might be some, 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 you know, interest. I bet you've been paying taxes on the lot as an undeveloped lot. Something to the tune of three hundred and ten dollars a year as opposed to the value of a lot if it was buildable.
To tell you the honest-to-God truth, I get so many tax bills.
I bet you do.
My wife just pays them all and yells at me. That's all. I don't even know what the taxes are on the lot.
God bless her.
I'm not even sure what they are.
So, anything else? Members of the board?
Well, I spoke already, so let's, let some other people talk before I...
Do you have anything further?
I'll take the position I've taken for years, that I think that people have a right to do with land that they own. And I do think that this was, is a residential zone. It's a residential lot. The abandonment issue, I, I haven't agreed with the court, the court's findings in the past on this or, or others. I, I think that putting a time limit on reconstruction is inappropriate, and it's personal opinion. I, I, nice thing about not being a lawyer is I don't have to pretend to be one. The, so in that sense, I, I have to be consistent and say that if there was a house on it, and a house can safely be put on it, and someone owns a lot in a residential zone, they should be able to put a house, a house on it. That's not, they haven't created this lot out of thin air. They haven't subdivided it off another parcel. They haven't, it's, it existed as a residential lot, you know? I, I assume in some point in time on a subdivision plan, pre-existing zoning. And fundamentally, my position is that it should be able to rebuild, notwithstanding the issues associated with this lot that I think make it, might make it less than desirable to build on at this time with the FEMA regulations and things that are out there. And I don't know what's going to happen in the next fifty years about waterfront property, and I think we could have a whole new set of regulations. We could have houses up and down the coast that are being, you know, not granted the right to reconstruct or even maintain, much the same as we have the dunes, the dune properties out on the national seashore of Cape Cod. I don't necessarily agree with that either, but the federal government took over the property and own it, and they're the ones that own the property, and they're the ones that have a right to do with it as they see fit.
But they had to pay for it.
They did have to pay for it. And that's the point here. This is a property that is owned by someone. If we're not going to allow them to, to build on it, if we're not going to allow them to the quiet enjoyment of their property in a, in a manner in which it had customarily been used, it seems to me that there should be, it's a land taking.
Kevin, Nick?
No. I have to echo Ed. I am an attorney who, I'm a real estate attorney, and I wish more attorneys in my profession sounded like you. It flies in the face of everything that is pre-existing, non-conforming, and the concept of grandfathering. For me to think that you can't put back the same house on this lot that was there before. And if this lot went entirely unused for the full, from when it was destroyed until now, maybe that would be one thing, but from what I've heard in the record here, it seems like the period was really five years. And especially in that time...
Wait, wait, wait. Where'd you get your five years?
From nineteen eighty to eighty-five. Is that wrong? Is that the, they reapplied to rebuild the house, right, and were denied?
But it was denied. Right. Whatever. I don't know, I don't know anything about that application because it's not before.
It's just my understanding. I, I feel that taking is, again, the correct word. And to the extent that the courts have disagreed with that, I respectfully disagree with the courts.
But, as zoning members of the, you know, as members of the zoning board appeals, you both are bound to apply, not, not your personal opinions, but to apply the law. And I just kind of remind everybody that town council gave an opinion on this, and I think it behooves all of us, when town council looks at this, an application like this, and looks at the facts, and looks at the law, it's, it's, it's presented to us to, to, you know, read it, listen to it. He's not dictating, obviously. Can't dictate. You have an independent judgment, but I think town council, who I know is a whole lot smarter than me, you know, has, has, has made an opinion about it and says that this, Gale does not apply. Nothing's changed. You know, I know, Anthony, you're familiar with the, you know, the, the, the race judicata. This has been litigated before. The same issue. There is no different issue that is being presented today that hasn't been previously presented, you know? So, that's all I'm going to say about that. All right. So I guess what, is there any?
Audience.
Anybody in the audience wish to be heard?
Hello?
Yes, sir.
I'm Edward McCafferty. I live directly, one thirty-eight Turner Road. My parents live directly across the street from one thirty. I own a house. I think I submitted a brief. I think it all, you know, I've been up and down this again for twenty-something years as well. I wasn't going to make a comment because I think my comments, my attorneys made in that brief echo the same sentiments that town council echoes and other attorneys I've spoke to and other people on the board. But I do want to just address that whole idea of the land taking thing. I somewhat, you know, I can understand where people come and from, and it, I can have some feelings there as well, if somebody were to suffer some type of hardship. The difference here is the only hardship that would be suffered, you know, monetary or otherwise, would be by me, because I bought that lot to pay for that view, which I would lose. There was no hardship here. It was a shot in the dark. It was maybe a business venture, whatever you want to call it, Mr. Workman took. And unfortunately, he's, you know, you know, gone up and down every other avenue here to try to build there. And it's, you know, just like it's been addressed. Courts have denied. And like I said, if there was anybody that's going to lose anything, the deal would be me, certainly not other than his time, if that was something he chose to do on his own. That's it.
And I'd like to respond, and not, not to be argumentative, but we have many times on the board in my tenure stated that you don't own a view, you don't buy a view.
I understand.
That if you don't control the property, you don't control the view. So...
Mr. Moore, your parents?
There's no question, but the, we have, again, I, we have repeatedly had to advise people who felt that my view will never change and wanted to compel us not to allow someone to do something with their property that they had a right to do.
I understand. I wasn't that aggressive, other than the fact that you did. And the fact is, I already knew what the circumstances, this came in after eighty-five, after all these permits had been denied, et cetera, et cetera. So I went in and thinking one thing, going based on what the law holds.
I don't think that's lost on this board. I, I certainly understand your point.
It hasn't changed.
I'd just like to point something out here. Our bylaw for repair and restoration non-conforming structure uses is more liberal with respect to damaged structures. I actually, as Stephen Michael will tell you, I had a great deal to do with writing this bylaw because I felt the other one was fairly draconian. And the, the one, I think the one thing that I, I want to point out about this bylaw is that it applies to structures, structures that have a right to exist, okay? And we did make it a lot more liberal, but even with this liberal bylaw, it doesn't apply to this lot, all right? And I think, you know, to vote, you know, to, you know, and I know, Ed, I really respect your judgment over the years, and, you know, you've got a great mind. But I think it, to vote for this is to be contrary to the bylaw. The bylaw is very clear. And, you know, I, I think the arguments, I haven't heard, I didn't hear the initial argument, but I know they have to do with case law. And then I, I think where the board agreed to request a, a letter from town council, which discussed the case law, I think it clearly is contrary to the zoning bylaw. There's no question about that. And then you look at the case law. So I think, you know, if, if you're going to say this is okay, you really need to look at the case law and say it's, it's okay because of the case law, but it's not okay because of the bylaw by any, you know? And, and it, it may not sit right with folks, and that's, that's one thing, but that doesn't mean it's, you know, it, under the bylaw side, it's, it's contrary to the bylaw, contrary to the letter for town council, which was, I think, done at the request of the applicant. Took a chance that he might agree, he might disagree.
But it's contrary to the bylaw in as much as there's not a structure on, on the lot.
Yeah. And this is a very liberal bylaw, frankly.
I, I understand, but I...
Because I was experiencing it with people, you know, folks were running up against a deadline, and, and that's why we did it. You know, we didn't want to take people's land. We didn't want to take their structures. And I think unfortunately, Mr. Locke's land was, you know, unfortunately, lost long before we wrote this bylaw. And I don't know of any way we could have, you know, recaptured it or what have you.
I under, I understand, and I'm, I'm very sympathetic to that position. The only, the area that I, I come back to in my mind is, does the structure have to be there to be granted a reconstruct permit? And I think, in fact, it has to not be there in as much as we always grant a raise and reconstruct. You can't reconstruct until it's not there.
Right.
So it's not there. It's been raised, and all we, all that we have here is a period of time of litigation and debate on whether a reconstruct permit can be granted, all going back to the, to the, the two-year limitation, which has, under Gale, been thrown out. Now, can, I don't, this is where I'm not an attorney, but can you go back thirty years and say, if it's thrown out now, it wasn't appropriate then, and therefore it, it shouldn't apply, particularly when you have a situation where the applicant has consistently been trying to, this applicant and previous owners have consistently been trying to reconstruct the house that was lost?
I guess my, my feeling is, is, has nothing to do with Mr. Pichalkin. I was just, you know, I've, I've made...
This isn't personal.
I've made very favorable calls to Mr. Pichalkin, and he's well aware of that, when I felt he was right. We took the very unusual step at the request of the applicant to get an opinion from town council. This, I don't know how many thousands of dollars this class of town is really taking it out of my hands. I certainly know that. And I think town council addressed Gale. And I think, you know, I, I would just say, look at this, and if, if, you know, it, I, I, I guess I look at this letter, and, and I don't know how, you know, we can say, we got us how, how we feel, you know, that, you know, either we're going to abide by town council. The applicant requested it. We didn't request it. Typically, we make our own decisions. And, and here it is. And we're, now we're saying, you know, we're not going to abide by this. And I think that's...
Can I direct something? I think, or at least say what I disagree with you, Ed, on the statement that you made that Gale eliminated the abandonment requirement. It didn't.
Didn't at all.
And, and this goes back to the discussion that I think started this whole thing, you know, with, with, with Mr. Hayes, that he raised that at the first hearing. And I've, I've read all these cases and the, and the statute, I don't know how many times, but the statute itself, separate from the first paragraph, which is what the Gale decision is all about, in the third paragraph says, "A zoning ordinance or bylaw may define and regulate non-conforming uses and structures abandoned or not used for a period of two years or more." So Gale doesn't touch paragraph three of, of section six. Abandonment is abandonment. And so that's why I say and ask you at the beginning, you know, what has changed with respect to abandonment from the facts that we knew and that, that were, were litigated previously? Put the race judicata part aside. I'm looking at the same facts and then trying to apply exactly the same law, because this third paragraph in section six and the, the Situate bylaw in two years existed then, exists now. And so what's different? And, and Gale isn't, didn't, first of all, Gale didn't change it because it doesn't apply. It's a completely separate part of the statute. And second, you know, Gale, this is a little bit of an esoteric legal point. Gale isn't new law. What Gale is, is a probably more clearer explanation of what the previous law was. You go back and you read the previous cases that it cited, some of which are twenty or thirty years old, and they all say the same thing. We all just probably didn't understand it that way. So, so there's been no change in the law, case law, really. There's been no change in the statutory law from what happened in your, in your previous cases. So, so that's why I say, I feel constrained. You know, I'm troubled by the examples that you've brought up, and I, and I appreciate them. But my job is to apply what I understand the law to be to the facts of this situation. And I see that the property was abandoned a long time ago.
This goes back to our first night, that talks about what, what Gale says and doesn't say. And clearly what it says, in my view, and I read it verbatim two or three times in the first night, is that there can be no further discussion on the reconstruction of a single or two-family dwelling beyond the two-pronged test that's in the first paragraph of forty-eight six. So, I mean, that was our starting point. But one thing that I think I, I turned to when Neil was talking, and I'd like to just read this, and then I'm, I'm going to be done, because it might give some insight to the board as to, to what the right to exist means, whether a building's existing or has the right to exist. And that's in our bylaw, four seventy-point-four definitions, floodplain and watershed protection district. It defines existing buildings or structures shall mean those residential and non-residential buildings or structures existing in the floodplain and watershed protection district on the date of the adoption of the floodplain watershed protection district bylaw nineteen seventy-two. So, provided that building or structure exists or has the right to exist in accordance with the provisions of eight hundred here. So, I mean, I think that, that, you know, we talk about, well, this building's not here, you know, it's certainly some direction in our bylaw as to what exists and doesn't exist. So, just thought I'd bring that up.
If I could try and clarify something, Frank, if I can.
Sure.
In two thousand and ten, we did change all of section eight hundred. We just heard Neil say how it got more liberal. So that's a new bylaw for you people to interpret. And that's your job, interpret the bylaw and apply it, okay? In that bylaw, there's different sections in section eight hundred. And one of them talks about a two-year timeframe. That's probably a standalone thing, that two-year timeframe for non-use. Then there's another section that talks about if a storm damaged, you got four years to rebuild. Well, that doesn't relieve you from the two-year timeframe. You still have the two-year timeframe on non-use, correct? Or does somehow the four-year relieve you from the two-year? I'm trying to figure that out. Because if, if you agree that maybe the four-year relieves you from the two-year, well, then let's read section eight ten point, was it, eight ten point?
Point one.
One. A. Does the word reconstruction and the fact that this town has allowed reconstructions up to twenty years supersede the two-year timeframe that's in front of it? Or do we only want to not apply the two years if we're applying the four-year statute? Okay? So the two years either applies or it doesn't apply. We can't just pick and say, well, because the four years applies, the two years doesn't. But over here, there is no timeframe in the single-family... But over here, there is no timeframe in the single-family section of the bylaw, which is brand-new in two thousand and ten for the town of Situate. That's a new portion of the bylaw for you people to interpret. That says you have a right to rebuild a single-family home with no timeframe.
But, so, the way I interpret the four years is that in certain circumstances, as defined in the bylaw, you have four years.
Okay. Perfect.
But if those circumstances don't apply, the bylaw that has always existed, the two-year one, applies.
Okay, now let's go to the only...
So do you fall under the...
Let's go to the only part of our bylaw that talks about the reconstruction of a single-family nonconforming dwelling. Do you see anything in that section that talks about a two-year timeframe?
Well, they're not gonna...
Do you see anything in that section that talks about a timeframe?
No, no.
Okay.
You know, the statute of limitations is...
It's a more liberal bylaw?
No, no, hang on, let me finish. The statute of limitations is in chapter two sixty, this is general statutes of limitations. Now, I'm going off on a tangent. Sorry, I'm sorry, but is chapter two sixty, section two, and three and four, depending on different types of actions. Causes of action that you can have, that you can bring claims on, exist throughout the general laws. Where you go to to find your statute of limitations is in those sections that deal with statutes of limitation. That's all this is doing. So, what you're saying, your logic would say to me, that under each section that grants a right, the bylaw needs to then set forth what the statute of limitations is, and it doesn't work that way. What it does is it says in eight-ten-one, what the statute of limitations is, and then in particular circumstances, it says, well, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna apply a different statute of limitations, and that happens all the time. So, the fact that, I think you're arguing that eight-ten, that there should be a separate statute set forth in eight-ten-two, just doesn't make any sense to me with all due respect.
Well, if you want a timeframe to reconstruct under that section, you should put a timeframe to reconstruct.
It's right before that. It says the, it's eight-ten-point-one.
Well, then eight-ten-point-one, according to town council, applies as well as eight-thirty.
Correct.
And there's nothing in eight-thirty, however, that says it's exempt from eight-ten.
That's right. So how do you allow everybody that comes under eight-thirty to be exempt from eight-ten? Figure that one out. I can't.
We did, well, I think you did.
I can't.
I think I did.
I think you did too.
So you apply it in certain circumstances, but you don't apply it in others. That's what happens.
Either way, and obviously, I've been made, I've made, at least showed my hand here, but I'm not sure that the point you're making would help you. You're still not meeting a four-year timeframe, right?
No, what I'm saying is in section eight-ten-point-two-A, there is no timeframe to reconstruct a single-family dwelling, as long as I put back what was there before. And it's not twenty percent larger. The building inspector has the authority to...
I understand what you're getting at. I think, I'm with Frank on this one.
I can't follow.
You're only reading the words that are in the bylaw.
I, and I recognize that notwithstanding, added in there in hindsight might be helpful, but I agree with Frank's interpretation.
Of the applied information.
Yeah, all right.
And the only thing that I would ask is that, depending upon what the decision is on this portion of it, that we either hold off on the other portion, or I'll withdraw if there's a denial here on the floodplain special permit. Because as you know, you can't just get a floodplain special permit and not a section-six finding and then build, okay? You have to receive both a section-six finding if you're nonconforming and a floodplain special permit in order to get a proper building permit.
Well, I guess that begs the question whether or not we make it, we need to make a, well, you're asking for...
Well, I will continue on the other if you want to make one.
They'll continue? No, this has gotta be over. I thought you wanted to get to that appeal score.
All I meant was on the floodplain portion. If you wanted to think about this part of the zoning, that I would put off the floodplain portion of it, that's all. Just if you didn't want to make a decision.
Four-seventy floodplain, I think refers to uses that of, floodplain special permit can be granted for uses that have a right to exist. So if you make a finding that this use doesn't have a right to exist...
Right.
Then I think that takes care of the floodplain. That's my personal opinion.
Right.
You might want to read the language.
And I agree with you on that, absolutely.
So, let's not put the cart before the horse then, right?
Right, right, right. So, all right, does, what is the board's pleasure on how to proceed at this point? Do we want to, any further discussion amongst us? Okay, I hear nothing?
No, actually, I'd just like to make a comment.
Okay.
You know, I've heard statements that, well, town council has told us this, and we've paid the money for town council, and we have to listen to town council and go along. Again, I beg to differ. I think what we, we have to, we have to look at it and interpret it in the best way we can. Granted, I appreciate town council's knowledge and ability to interpret the law. A lot of times what we do here is to interpret the intent of the bylaws and how they were intended to act.
I don't disagree with you.
So, I just, I don't want to be, I don't want it to suggest that any vote that the board takes, we are compelled to follow town council's advice. The town council is learned and wise, and we appreciate their input, and frequently they bring insight that I know I haven't looked at. I, unfortunately, I feel as though this, this is one of those arguments about, you know, what's the definition of is-is, you know, it's, as I said, this lot, the, the wise, the wise owner of this lot may choose not to invest in rebuilding because of the exposure it has, the FEMA regulations, the other things that are coming down the pike. But whether or not an owner of a lot has a right to reconstruct simply because the building is no longer there, I would argue, as you do, that the, the use of that lot is not abandoned. It's a residential lot in a residential zone, and the use of that lot is still there.
I just count the structure as...
The structure doesn't exist.
Right.
But it's been, but that doesn't lose its right to be reconstructed. Because you, it has to not exist to be reconstructed, and that's where I say this is a definition of is-is. I don't know, I'm, I think the court has, has found, has made decisions over the years on this one. I have no idea how they will, would look at this if it were to come before them again, but it's an unfortunate situation because I think we, I think as we look at applications today, if this were before us back in ninety-five, or in ninety, or in eighty-five, before this board, in the light of how this board looks at things, it may well have had the opportunity to be reconstructed. And I guess that's my comment.
Nobody seems to want to make a motion, so. I guess I'll, so, move to, with respect to the application by Steve Bjorkland, trustee of one forty-one for the property at one forty-one Turner Road, and the request for a finding pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-eight, section six, to allow the reconstruction of a single-family dwelling in accordance with the application, that the board deny the request on the grounds that the property or the use has been abandoned in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Situate as authorized by general laws, chapter forty, section six, third paragraph, and additionally, on the grounds that the decision of the appeals court in Gale has not changed the law that has existed with respect to abandonment. And thirdly, I guess, on the grounds that this matter has already been fully litigated, and opportunities to litigate it in court were, and to argue all of this were previously granted, and the applicant lost, and, and so this, in my view, is also barred on the basis of race duty cut.
I would just like to amend that to, to, instead of a finding, to deny the special, request for a special permit.
I didn't say that.
No, you said, just finding. I think it, they have to have a special permit to do it.
Yeah, then I agree with the amendment.
Okay. So we have to vote on the amendment, I think.
Can I just make an appeal in the Gale? I lost that. I didn't get that part.
Okay.
Also, on the grounds of the decision of the appeals court in Gale...
In Gale.
That...
That the, can you go, go back a little bit further, and what did you get me saying?
The town of Situate has a law by general laws, and also on the grounds of the decision of the appeals in Gale, that...
The decision of the appeals court in Gale did not change, did not make a change in the law with respect to abandonment.
Okay, that's fine. Can you save us one step? Instead of using the term abandonment, can you use not-used? Because abandonment is a two-pronged process, and the denial prior to was because it's not used.
You're always, you're always editing. He's got a red pen in his brain.
It'll just send me back in front of you guys again to...
Right, no, no, I, well, all right. I will first deal with my amendment. I, I propose, no, I move to, and I'll include yours. I'll move to amend the motion to state special permit and to amend abandonment to include abandonment or not used. Let me, in fact, let me get the exact language in the statute.
That's it, abandoned or not used.
Or abandoned or not used, for a period of two years or more.
So you want me to take a abandoned...
No, just say it. Just put abandoned or not used.
Or not, okay.
Okay, is all in favor of the, the second on the motion to amend the...
Yes.
All in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Amendment.
On the amendment, okay.
Okay, so no one seconded the actual motion?
No, so now we've got a, we've got a corrected motion, so now is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Just to make it clear, the motion.
We're motion. We're voting, we're voting, we're voting now on Frank's...
My motion, I'd amend it.
My motion.
Right, so...
To deny.
So yes vote, deny, and no vote would...
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Would not deny.
Okay. All, all in favor of denying it? Aye, yes.
Yes.
Yes, aye.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna demand votes from everybody, just a, did you get one? You said yea, you, you voted against it?
Yes, right.
Okay, and I didn't hear yours.
No.
Okay, so...
So we have trees, Alan, and Lynch.
Yes to deny. Okay, all right.
And Sarah, because of that vote, I'd like to ask that we be allowed to withdraw without prejudice our floodplain special permit application.
Okay. You withdraw, you, so you, you...
The floodplain portion of our...
Okay, so let's make a new motion.
Motion to allow the applicant to withdraw their floodplain special permit without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's unanimous. All right, so now, do we have another motion? So we...
Adjourn.
No, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. I think, do we have to see if there's another motion? It's, we don't, what do we have, oh, is that it?
Denied.
Denied, and you, you did both of them.
Okay, we don't have to do another one. I'm trying to have just thrown for a loop because we just never do it that way.
You didn't want this discussion to be over, did you?
I really enjoyed it. It's not personal.
I have a question, so that has to be a unanimous vote, you know, or...
That's the question, I think for us.
So, you have three voting members?
I think...
Two, so motion carried, because you have two in one day.
Because you only have to have unanimous to allow a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just, I'm gonna, just point of order here.
Yeah, but because they're...
The application was for a finding.
For section, no, it doesn't say...
Or any other, or any other relief.
Or any other relief, is that what it says?
Yeah.
It doesn't say specifically, oh, if, a finding, yeah, finding.
Yeah, I was reading from.
So.
Motion to adjourn.
Back to the races?
Make that one.
I suppose you'll be appealing that?
No.
Come on.
You may see me sooner than you think. Let's put it that way.
I'm always pleased to see you, Steve.
I appreciate, we off the...
Sarah, just don't ask me to write the decision.
We're still, we're still live.
I appreciate the fact that the board, at least I'm in there, and allowed me to have all the members here, as well as Neil. Again, as I come across, like I'm somewhat aggressive, obviously.
Somewhat?
I put a lot, a lot of effort into research on this type of thing. It's been going on a long time. So I do appreciate the time and all the votes.
Well, we, we, we understand, you know, we really understand your position. I just feel constrained that, you know, as I said, I have, I'm like us, you know, other judges, I suppose, or pseudo-judge up here, but, you know, if, if somebody says we need to do something different, you know, we'll do it.
We've changed the town bylaw before, and there's a possibility we'll change the town bylaw again. It is the last piece of property that hasn't been reconstructed from the stone of seventy-eight that has some ability to be reconstructed.
That's, um...
I don't know about that.
At least one on Rebecca Road. There's been a number of them.
Rebecca Road was sold to a next-door neighbor, so that's now been adjourned with the other piece, so they don't have the right to reconstruct.
I would check the stats on that one, see.
I, they came from a conservation when I was on, so...
Haiti Beach.
Those are all, those are...
Each lots were sold to the government.
Sold to the government.
No, four, four houses. There were thirty-five houses that were destroyed there and not reconstructed, and four were sold.
There's four, there's a couple...
Just check your facts.
So if I win, the rest of those will come back?
Check your facts.
You might be right.
There's a couple of the lots under the dam, between six E and ten.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourns.
Back of it.
All in favor?
Aye.